Hello and welcome to Meet the Candidates, a candidate forum for Blaine City Council Ward One presented by the League of Women Voters of Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids area. I am Gretchen Sable, a trained moderator and a member of LWV ABC. I live in Andover and I’m not able to vote for any of these candidates. The League of Women Voters has a 100-year-long history of providing objective information to help voters become informed about candidates and issues. LWV does not support or oppose any political parties or candidates, but the League does help citizens become informed voters, and we advocate for important issues that we’ve studied. This Meet the Candidates forum is about informing voters. If you’re interested in learning more about the League of Women Voters, visit our webpage, We invite people of all genders, gender identities, and all ages over 16 to join. To begin the forum, we’ll have two introductory -- the candidates will have two introductory questions they received in advance, followed by questions submitted by the public via our website. We’ll end with closing statements. Candidates will take turns going first and answering questions. Answers are limited to 90 seconds each for the two introductory questions and one minute each for the other questions and closing statements. This forum is being recorded tonight without an audience. We thank the city of Blaine and North Metro Cable for their support and assistance. LWV forums are posted on the LWV ABC YouTube channel and are cablecast by North Metro Cable. LWV ABC posts complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. This forum is for Blaine City Council Ward One, and the candidates are Scott Rosa-Hawsky and Tom Newland. All candidates for this seat were invited to attend, and we’re pleased to say that the candidates are with us tonight. So let’s get into the questions. And we’re going to start with candidate Newland. What is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Well, first, thank you for the invitation to participate. The League of Women Voters has an outstanding job with these events, allowing people that are interested to learn about the candidates and learn about our thoughts on various things related to the city. I currently serve on the city council, and I’m very honored to do so. The -- my background is I’ve lived in this area for over 40 years. I’ve been a resident of Blaine for 18 years. I run a business here in Blaine that I own and operate. I’ve done that for 29 years. The knowledge base that I bring to this position is based on over 20 years of activity within the city. I’ve been involved in virtually every organization that you can think of within City Hall. I’ve been involved with many different community organizations for a long time as well, serving as founding member of a couple of the organizations here. And giving back to the city, serving the residents, serving the community, is something I’ve done for as long as I can remember. And here at the city council level, taking that knowledge base and sharing it with the topics that come forth, sharing, looking at the vision of the city and how we will continue to move forward is what I’ve been doing, will continue to do, and ask for your support and allowing me to do so for the next four years.
Thank you. Candidate Rosa-Hawsky?
Well, thank you, and I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. It’s always an honor to be able to talk to the citizens willing to listen and willing to engage with us. My motivation for this office, I have always been one to seek out service to my community and to my country. As a child, I was in the Boy Scouts of America, and we constantly did service projects for the community, to engage in the community, and to help others that weren’t able to help themselves. After that, I joined the military, specifically the U.S. Navy, and I enjoyed serving my country, being able to protect others that relied upon us. And as a city council member, people rely upon the city council specifically to protect them and to engage them and support them, which I have done constantly with service projects that I’ve done with the U.S. military, engaging with schools, the communities, doing service projects, feeding the needy in certain communities. And one of the biggest things for knowledge for me is that I have a master’s degree in criminal justice, and I obtained that while in service with the U.S. military to understand and engage the interactions within the community and how the criminal justice system works and how best to support the community and those that are within the community there. Additionally, I serve on the Anoka Hennepin Secondary Social Studies Committee to understand this community and its relation with education.
Thank you very much. The next question is, what are your top two goals for the future of Blaine? You could have more than two if you like. Candidate Rosa-Hawsky?
Oh, thank you. So my two main goals here in Blaine. First and foremost, I want to return power to the working people, to the middle class. I am a strong supporter of unions. Being able to bring union representation here means two things. First and foremost, it means being able to allow the people within the community that are union members to stay within this community, to be able to reinvest in the community that they love. Additionally, it supports being able to save money in a tax base because we currently have a lot of contractors that are coming in from out of state performing these projects, and these projects are failing after one or two years, which is costing the taxpayers. So by supporting unions and bringing union representation back here to Blaine, we’re not only supporting those within the community, but we’re helping save tax dollars. Additionally, for me, a personal issue as a veteran, I want to help fight veterans’ homelessness. Blaine now has about a 5.8% homeless population here. It has risen about 1.1% since the last census, and a little over 2% of that are veterans. So I want to bring a Veterans Affairs Satellite Hall here to be able to invest in our veterans, to be able to invest in that vulnerable population so that we can help those that aren’t able to help themselves. And by doing that, we can allow the surrounding communities to be able to thrive rather than struggle like they have been for many years.
Thank you very much. Candidate Newland?
Thank you. The city has done an excellent job of growing. It is being run very well, very efficiently. The bond rating of the city is phenomenal, and that’s attributable to what happens here within City Hall and how it is operated. The city will continue to grow, perhaps at the same pace that it’s been for the last couple of years, but that will slow down as new developments, primarily in the northeast corner of the city, fill in. As it pertains to Ward One, the southern third of the city, the top goal would be to ensure that redevelopment, that the plans that are being brought forward at 105th and Radisson as well as Northtown Mall are done with sound resident input and done intelligently to ensure that we have these generational opportunities for redevelopment to occur and take place with a strong plan and done very well. Second issue would be on development itself. Down again here in the southern third of the city, most of the land is already occupied by existing homes, older homes, newer homes, industrial communities, so the available space for newer homes coming in or newer developments is a challenge. And the challenge that we see at City Hall, at the city council, is with apartment complexes that want to go into those areas. And dealing with those very cautiously to respect the residents that are there, but also look towards where those opportunities may lie for us are going to be a continuing challenge.
Thank you, candidate Newland. So you’re going to start next on the next question. What does community safety mean to you?
Community safety is one of the most important things that the city of Blaine provides. It’s what makes this city what it is. I’ve been very involved with two of those aspects, one being the police department, the formation of the Blaine Public Safety Association, which we started 15-some-odd years ago primarily to fund and help the K-9 teams get going. It’s been very successful. I’ve had the opportunity to work with a number of enforcement officers or police officers and staff, and giving the police department the tools, the knowledge, the education they need to effectively do their job is key to community safety. The second aspect of that is the fire department. I was on the fire department’s Board of Directors for six years. I had the pleasure of serving for six, for three of those years as president of the fire department. So continuing to give, again, like the police department, the fire department the same, the equipment and tools they need to do their job. Those work hand in hand, and it’s critical for the city to give the support behind those two entities.
Thank you. Candidate Rosa-Hawsky?
Oh, thank you. So community safety to me means that the people in this community want to continue to live here. And I’ve been knocking on many doors, and people in this community in certain areas don’t feel safe. They want to move their families out of here because in Ward One specifically, we aren’t taking care of the community. Our Blaine Police Department is a fantastic police department, and they do what they can, but we have to provide certain supports to that area. My opponent here, Mr. Newland, mentioned our fire departments. They also need investment. In Minnesota, we are currently 48th in the nation in funding our fire departments. So we need to be able to provide the support that we need to those areas for community safety. Additionally, community safety means those people within the community getting to know each other, because a lot of people in certain areas, because they don’t feel safe, are not willing to get to know their neighbors. So if we provide that support, we can provide a sense of community.
Thank you. Candidate Rosa-Hawsky, what role do labor unions play in Blaine? Are they important? Why or why not?
Thank you. So labor unions, as we can previously see, I do support, and they play a very, very large role here. Ward One specifically has a very large union membership. So if we support our labor unions, we’re supporting our residents here. Additionally, labor unions provide safety in the community. They also provide support to our police departments. Specifically, in the construction trades, something that is very rampant without union representation are human trafficking and drug trafficking. So if we bring union representation back here, we’re not only providing safety for those people and keeping drugs out of our community, we’re helping support our police department in an indirect manner, in an indirect fashion. Additionally, as I mentioned previously, by investing in these unions, we’re reinvesting into the community because these unions and these people will stay here while working. And with their projects being the high quality that they are, we’ll save money for the taxpayers.
Thank you. Candidate Newland, what role do labor unions play in Blaine? Are they important? Why or why not?
Labor unions are very important, especially here in City Hall. The two biggest departments personnel-wise that work for the city are the police department and Public Works, both of which are dominated by excellent unions that represent the workers that are there. City Hall, city staff, city council is fortunate to have very good relations with both of those unions, and our goal is to continue those relations to make sure they move forward for the betterment of everyone. The people that work for those unions, as I mentioned, with those two do a phenomenal job, and the union does a good job of representing them. Specific to the city, there is a union hall off of 93rd and Iowa 65. That’s there for a specific reason because there are a number of union employees that are represented through living here in Blaine. So hopefully, we’ll have a nice balance, and those things will continue for a long time to come.
Thank you. Candidate Newland, what are your thoughts on the new ban on drag racing? Is the penalty appropriate? Should spectators be ticketed for misdemeanor offense as well as participants?
Great question, because that topic did come forth at a city council workshop a few months ago before it was passed as an ordinance by the city council. Yeah, there are challenges here. There are areas that have drag racers, street racers, taking advantage of open parking lots, taking advantage of their ability to show off their cars and do whatever. To have Blaine be situated as the first city in the state to have passed such an ordinance is huge for the city to have been proactive and give the police department, again, the tools they need to deal with the offenders. Is the ordinance -- it’s vague enough intentionally to give officers latitude for what they can do. The penalties go hand in hand with whatever infractions take place. So it’s a good starting point. It can always be modified, but I’m proud that this police department and this city has taken the step to enact such an ordinance.
Thank you very much. Candidate Rosa-Hawsky?
Thank you. So drag racing, in the recent weeks, I have talked to the citizens, and it has been a great issue. They are worried about the safety of their kids on certain roads, especially with areas of high traffic. These drag racers are now going down veins of the city, and these are areas with high population. This ordinance does help in certain aspects, and as my opponent has stated, it is very vague. But the vagueness is there to allow that latitude for the police department to operate. And I know many people are worried about that vagueness. I myself drive a motorcycle, and we have motorcycle meets, and that’s a community event. We try not to disturb the community, but that implementation and that vagueness, being able to implement that law relies specifically on the police department. And the police department is heavily in community engagement, and I strongly believe that they will not abuse this power.
Thank you. You’re up next on this next one. Candidate Rosa-Hawsky, what does community engagement mean to you, and how will you collaborate with the community you represent?
Excellent question. So community engagement to me means being proactive instead of reactive. I’m out in the city of Blaine every single day. I talk to hundreds, if not thousands, of people because I want to get the opinions of the people. I want to understand their wants and their needs. Specifically, one of the biggest needs besides the drag racing has been apartment complexes coming up, and the residents are worried about those areas. Specifically, they’re worried that their voices are not being heard. I know that an area wasn’t informed that the apartment complex was going up, and the notices that went out were very vague and they weren’t distributed effectively. So we, being the city council, need to be in that community engaging those people. We need to be out there talking to them the moment something like this comes out to be able to get their input and not have them coming here and worrying at the very last moment when they don’t believe that there’s anything they can do anymore.
Thank you. So candidate Newland, what’s happening with rebuilding? Oh, I’m sorry. Yes, candidate Newland, I’m sorry. What does community engagement mean to you?
Thank you. If you’re wondering my name, I would help you with that because that’s pretty easy. Community engagement is at the crux of what city council members do. It’s listening to the residents, getting involved with advocating on their behalf, taking the voices that we here in the community back here to City Hall to make informed decisions and make decisions that are best for the residents. It’s an ongoing issue. It doesn’t end on November 8th when the camp, when the elections are done. That’s why there are numerous opportunities to get into the community, whether it’s a gathering at St. Tim’s Catholic Church for their festival, whether it’s Oktoberfest, which will take place here on Saturday, whether it’s being invited to a grand opening of a restaurant or new business. It’s a matter of being here in the community, which is why I live here. I own a business here. I spend most of my time here. There are many a day where I don’t leave the city limits at all. Those are good days.
Thank you, and I’m sorry for messing up on that one. So now, candidate Newland, what’s happening with the rebuilding of Northtown property and how will you involve public opinion in that work?
Northtown is a key part of what’s happening now and what will happen to the future. Again, it’s a once-in-a-generational opportunity to get things done correctly, get it done right at Northtown Mall. The first proposal that came forward was for an apartment, an apartment complex that was presented to be developed by the old Rainbow Food Site. After learning of that, I spent a good chunk of time, an evening, walking that area, talking with the residents, getting feedback, and brought that back to the workshop discussion about the apartment complex, and it’s been delayed. It’s taking, it’s allowing the developer to take that feedback back to the table and seeing what it is that they wish to do. The same is true of the current discussion for an apartment complex on 101st and University. The feedback that I received from the residents enabled that topic to be tabled, and it’ll be retooled. It’ll come back again, but I don’t know where it’s going to go from there.
Candidate Rosa-Hawsky, what’s happening with the rebuilding of the Northtown property and how will you involve public opinion?
So the Northtown property is a property that many people are wondering what’s going to happen to it. And one of the biggest things or the main issues is that the residents do not want high-rise apartment buildings. I know that has been a primary plan in that area, but the residents do not want that, and they aren’t informed. The city council has not done a great job engaging those residents with that plan. One of the biggest things that I hear that people would love to have is a rustic feel. People love to call Ward One in Blaine Old Blaine. So why don’t we expand on this and make it Rustic Blaine? Bring some brick oven pizzas or maybe a coffee shop, a nice park, and we don’t need these high-rise apartment buildings in all these areas. Additionally, our infrastructure wouldn’t be able to support such a thing. I know in that area specifically, a water main broke, and if we add more high-rise apartment buildings, it’s not going to be effective.
Thank you very much. A very important topic. What does diversity mean to you and how does it help us grow and prosper in Blaine? Candidate Rosa-Hawsky?
Awesome. So diversity to me means being able to understand different cultures, being able to engage with those different cultures, and bringing their spice of life to this community. We have World Fest in this area where we got to understand and learn about different cultures. We have many different people from many different walks of life, and if we learn about them and we bring their views here to Blaine, we can only be stronger because in America, we are only strong as the community that we represent.
Candidate Newland, what does diversity mean to you and how does it help us grow and prosper in Blaine?
The city has grown very diverse over the time that I’ve been here. The whole area has grown very diverse. On my street that I live on, it’s cul-de-sac, and I’m one that’s, I’ve been there for 18 years, as I mentioned. There are families that have come in since that, and it’s a very diverse neighborhood. There are multi-generational families that live on my street. There’s a number of different ethnicities that live there, so it’s right in front of me every day. The city will, again, continue to see that. It’s quite, it’s a good thing probably for the city to be very diverse, that we all then learn about one another from the backgrounds that we bring to where we live and where we are. And I think that even at City Hall, that diversity has expanded, and I agree that that also would be a good thing to continue to perpetuate.
Thank you, candidate Newland. The next one looks at the topic of local government aid. Blaine does not receive local government aid from the state. As a member of city council, would you seek to change this and how?
Blaine does not receive local government aid, government aid, which is the best thing that we’ve got going for us. We don’t want to be reliant upon the state for dollars that keep this city moving forward. Local government aid is helpful for rural communities, for smaller communities. Some of the bigger communities in this area, Minneapolis and St. Paul, are big recipients of it. Blaine stands on its own. We balance our own budget. We make sure that the money coming in matches the money going out and that the property taxes are maintained at a very reasonable level. So local government aid is something that we want to avoid. We don’t want to make the change to rely on it, and that reliance on that stream becomes very unreliable. It’s not what we think it is, and I’m happy that the city doesn’t receive local government aid and hope to continue that we don’t.
Thank you. Candidate Rosa-Hawsky?
Oh, thank you. So local government aid, we constantly believe that asking for help shows weakness. Asking for help doesn’t show weakness. It shows strength because we’re trying to improve our community. In the Blaine budget right now, 75% of our budget comes from our taxpayers. It comes from these property taxes. Specifically, in 2009, we had a 9% increase in property taxes here because we refused to continue a certain program, which has caused an overreliance on property taxes, which has been a significant burden on our taxpayers here. Additionally, we don’t ask for grants here, which honestly surprises me. There are hundreds, if not thousands, of government grants out there that we can use to ease the burden on the taxpayers here. We can use it to be able to improve the city, improve our pedestrian infrastructure, improve our parks, and improve the lives of our citizens. So I strongly believe that we should be able to ask for these things while being smart with our budget.
Thank you very much. The next question looks at, oh, I’m sorry. Candidate Newland, did you get? Did you?
I talked about local government aid, yeah. I can talk about it again if you wish because I don’t like it.
Candidate Rosa-Hawsky, what could Blaine be doing to reduce the city’s carbon footprint, both within government services and for its residents?
Excellent question. So our carbon footprint can be improved in a few manners. One is by improving our traffic and our roads. So if we do that, we can stop cars idling in areas which attributes to a high-carbon footprint. Additionally, we can improve our electrical infrastructure by allowing houses in residential communities and schools to have solar panels or a wind farm. One of the things that I am a huge proponent of is nuclear power. I love these things called small modular reactors or breeder reactors. These things can provide a whole bunch of carbon-free energy, and they utilize what many people call waste. If we do this, we can actually have other states pay us money to take care of their quote-unquote “waste” to provide low-cost, carbon-free energy here in this community.
Thank you. Candidate Newland, what could Blaine be doing to reduce the city’s carbon footprint, both within government services and for its residents?
I’m already seeing more solar panels go on homes around the area, and that will continue. That’s driven by as much the opportunities and the costs of solar panels coming down. I know Canexus Energy has got a big drive for adding solar. They have a nice solar farm up by their corporate headquarters. There’s a solar farm over by Avetta that is quite extensive. I can see that the solar panel utilization within the city for residents will continue. It’s up to them to decide, the homeowner to decide whether they want to make that investment and if they get the return on their investment back. The city itself, at the new water plant, part of the roofing system was a totally green roof. It’s beautiful to see. It eliminates a lot of the loss on the carbon use that’s going on over there. There’s also been conversations about, are we going to add solar panels to the rooftop there? And that’s a cost-benefit analysis that will come forward.
Thank you very much. As a member of city council, how would you address the fiscal disparities tax, candidate Newland?
Well, I happen to be a member of the city council, and the fiscal disparities tax is a very obscure commercial industrial tax that businesses bear. My commercial property, it’s the largest percentage of my tax bases, fiscal disparities. It goes into this metropolitan council-controlled fund, and it’s mysteriously split up. Anoka County happens to be a very large recipient of the fiscal disparities tax, and it goes into their general fund, which is not what the intent was when that fund was developed in the 70s. The fiscal disparities tax is a challenge that businesses are painfully well aware of. General public, unless you’re owning a commercial property, you don’t know much about it. It’s, there’s imbalance to it. Nobody can explain it in a short succinct manner, which tells me that it might be a little bit late in dealing with it from our level, but that’s an issue that needs to be addressed, I believe, out of the state capitol.
Thank you. Candidate Rosa-Hawsky, as a member of city council, how would you address the fiscal disparities tax?
It’s a very good question. So the fiscal disparities tax was meant to be essentially a fund to help distribute to smaller communities, to grow their community in an effective manner. This system, what I all wasn’t perfect and never will be perfect, no system is, did help certain communities invest into themselves. It has now grown to an area where it is now a large burden on local businesses. We do need to address it. It is something that needs to be thought of. We need to ensure that even having this tax, if it will continue to help certain communities, we need to look into that. We don’t want to overly immediately get rid of it because we could be harming local communities here, and we don’t want to do that. We don’t want to have another type of burden while we already have one. So we need to think through this in an intelligent manner and either draw it down.
Candidate Rosa-Hawsky? Candidate Rozahasky, what can be done to decrease the amount of crime around Northtown Shopping Center and make it safer for customers, especially when they're walking to their cars?
It's a very good question, and it hits close to home because I do shop in that area. I do shop in that Cub Foods, and many people know that there was a carjacking recently there. In that area, one good way to think through this is deterrence. We can have a patrol car be there for a longer period of time to actually show force. So it would actually deter people from committing those crimes and making that community safer. Another good aspect is to invest into that community, to be able to build it up, because if we build up a community, then the community itself will care. And so we will have a larger, safer community looking out for each other. Additionally, we do need to look at the aspect of high density, something that's called the concentric zones theory in criminal justice, where if there's a high density of people, more crimes are committed. So we do need to look into different aspects there.
Thank you very much. Candidate Newland, what can be done to decrease the amount of crime around Northtown Shopping Center and make it safer for customers, especially when walking to their cars?
Northtown benefits with the greater amount of activity that would be taking place. It will also benefit longer term when it's completely redeveloped. It right now has opportunities for crime because there are vacant areas, vacant chunks of land. There are different things that bring out a criminal element, let's call it. I was at that Northtown Mall the Saturday morning of the carjacking. It was much earlier in the morning. There was activity there. I don't think anything about going to Northtown Mall, going to the Cub Foods there. I do business in that area frequently, and I'm in there frequently. The longer-term solution is to permanently change it and bring activity and long-term change to that area. Short-term, the police are very aware of what's going on at Northtown Mall, which is why they have the site inside the mall itself. It's a police substation, so to speak, but they monitor that area very heavily.
Thank you very much. A little bit on a lighter note here now. What is your favorite place to walk, bike, or enjoy nature in Blaine, Candidate Newland?
I just had the opportunity with the entire city council to walk Pioneer Park. There's some extensive trails back in there that you can be in the middle of the city, but you're in the middle of a park, and you don't know that you're surrounded by homes. You're surrounded by residential areas. Within the city itself, my most favorite place to be is at Victory Links Golf Course. It's a great golf course. It can be very secluded, great place to spend time to relax, which we all need, and I enjoy time there. And at the other golf course called the TPC, I've been there a number of times too, but there are some phenomenal open areas that we can all spend time.
Thanks. Candidate Rozahasky, you get out and enjoy nature?
I absolutely do. Nature is one of the greatest things that we have here, and we need to preserve it. One thing that I enjoy talking with people about are the wetlands areas, and I'm really excited to see that completion in the future. Getting out to that area is incredibly peaceful. I just always feel happy going up to that area. But kind of on the lighter note, my favorite thing right now is just to walk the streets of Blaine. I love getting to see these communities, getting to see the different cultures on each and every street. I love to see how the residents get together there. It's honestly amazing to me at all the different cultures that exist from street to street here in Blaine.
Thank you very much. So now we're going to wrap up with closing statements by each of the candidates, and Candidate Rozahasky, you get to go first.
Ooh, exciting. So, I would like to again thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and those citizens that are tuning in here. I am beyond excited to continue to walk the streets of Blaine and get to know people. I am looking forward to knocking on your doors. I'm looking forward to getting to know the issues that are important to you, the issue or the things that are just important to you here. I am looking forward to, come November 8th, being able to represent you, and I do hope that together we can move forward, we can invest in this community, we can make this a community where people want to stay, they don't want to move, and when people talk about Ward One in the future, that it will be one of happiness and greatness.
Thank you. Candidate Newland, closing statement?
Thank you. Again, my name is Tom Newland. I currently serve on the city council and have the pleasure of doing so, representing Ward One. Ward One is a great area. There is such diversity with the housing stock, with the personnel, with the people that I've interacted, that have lived there, some for fifty years, some for a couple of weeks, couple of days. The city is filled with great opportunity, looking for the areas that we will be able to invest in, around 105th and Radisson, Northtown Mall, filling in areas that have the opportunity. But I'm very optimistic about where the city is right now and where it will continue to go. I do look forward to having the opportunity, if I'm successful on November 8th, to continue to serve for the next four years. But the last closing statement I would make is a visual, and that's vote Tom Newland. Keep him in office on November 8th.
Thank you very much. This concludes the forum for Blaine City Council, Ward One. Thank you, candidates, for speaking to voters about issues and for stepping up to run for Blaine City Council. Thank you, voters, for your interest in becoming informed voters. If you have additional questions for these candidates, please contact them directly. To register to vote or to update your registration, there's a website called MNvotes.gov. I'll spell that out in a minute. You can enter your address in this website to verify your registration. You can see a sample ballot and verify your polling place. You can also request an absentee ballot on this site. So that website is MNVOTES.gov. We're now in the early voting period, and you can vote any weekday right here at Blaine City Hall or at the Anoka County Courthouse in Anoka. When you vote, you participate in our democracy. You make it stronger, and you make it yours. Vote honor before November 8th. Thank you and goodbye.